Comments? Don't forget.
I have a comment.
Carol?
Go ahead, Annika.
Oh, great, thank you. I actually am really concerned with this proposal. I think that being forced to park on only one side of the street is going to create a parking issue and cause people to have trouble finding parking spots available, especially those that are close to where they reside. The other real concern I have is that the speeding is the least serious issue on our block. And with opening up the streets so that it's wider, I think it's going to increase speeding as a real issue. There are several small kids that live on our block and just, you know, people in general. It's just a significant issue. And I would rather see some work done to help curb this issue. So that's, I guess, my perspective on this.
Okay. I will address briefly because we just did do a study on Franklin Street for traffic with the new traffic camera we got. And the average speed was 19 miles an hour because that was a concern of mine too on Franklin. So it does not appear that speeding is a problem.
Come on.
At least in the second street that we took.
I can't hear you, Stephen. Stefan.
All right, can everyone else hear me or?
Yeah, if anyone who's not hearing could just mute, that would be great.
Just the end of what you just said.
Um, just that based on the studies we did, it does not appear that speeding is a problem.
Well, may I just ask for just more information regarding that because an average is one thing, but I'm, yes, I'm curious as to on the high end of the, of the, of the study as far as the speed that you captured, could you tell us, give us a sense of how many?
I don't have the data, Annika, I'm sorry. It was, they did not highlight anything that they were concerned with, the officer that I spoke to, but I don't have the data in front of me.
I'm just surprised to hear that just because myself and a lot of my neighbors comment oftentimes at how fast people are going up and down the block. And it, and it's from both sides, not just going northward, you know, going in a northern direction. It also happens with people coming, driving in a southern direction. So, I mean, we see it and we hear it. So I'm really surprised that that, that, that is what came back from the data that was collected. And could you at least explain how long that, that the speed, the speeding study was conducted for?
I'll have to get the data up on this end. On South Franklin, it was up for three weeks and I'm not sure how long it was up on North Franklin.
Okay, I think that would be good information. Thank you.
I never saw it on, can anyone hear me?
Yes, she can.
Okay, this is Tim in the firehouse. Hi, I mean, I never even saw the speed sign up around here.
Neither did I, not at all. So I'm surprised to hear that as well.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there are people that come over the top of that hill going pretty fast and, you know, there's always been a problem. I know that, you know, the Francents used to live across the street and it was crazy because their kids were out playing and these people come over and it's a blind hill. And it seems that it's, oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I agree, Tim. That's one of the concerns is that blind hill.
Speeding has really been increasing all around the village, particularly this summer.
Go ahead, Mari.
Well, we're in general in favor of moving it to one side of the street, but we have serious concerns about speed. It happens from both directions. It happens from the top of the hill down and it happens from Market going up. And I can't tell you how many times I'm out walking the dog and I'm going, slow down, slow down. In addition to that, we have some questions about if, what happens in regards to snow removal. If parking is all on one side of the street, we're on the same side of the street as Annika and also Tim, does all the snow get pushed over to our side of the street? What happens?
Because we lived on Third Street.
When we lived on Third Street and it's also a one-sided street, it was definitely an issue.
I don't know the technical answer to that, Mari. I believe it gets pushed off to both sides. There is no longer single side, you know, it's not emergency side parking when it's single, when it's single side parking, so the parking would remain as is. But I think, you know, as with any parking, it does tend to get some snow pushed over onto the cars. But I'm not sure how they do that exactly.
Wayne, would you be able to tell us how that would be approached through the DPW?
Well, in both those areas, always in the past, after a snowstorm, we've always gone behind after cleaning Second Street. I've always, we've always gone up and down those roads with the snow blower and removed the snow.
But the snow need, the snow needs to be pushed in a particular direction. And certainly on Third Street, it was pushed more in one side of the street than the other side of the street.
Well, that's actually my plow route and I've always pushed it on both sides. And like I said before, and always in the past, after the snowstorm and after, once we clean up Second Street, we've always gone up and down the roads where there's been large snow piles and have removed all, as much snow as we can.
Okay.
Anyone else had a question? Go ahead, Jane. You're muted now.
Do you need me to unmute you?
No. Maria kept muting me, I don't know why.
Freedom of speech.
Yeah, absolutely. Just want to reiterate the speeding issue. I can't speak to what happens at the top of the hill. You know, where Tim and certainly Annika can speak more to that, but I'm just talking about the, you know, the slope down to the stop sign. It's, it's every day. It's not a once in a while, you know, kind of thing. So my two cents on that. And obviously on, you know, our, where we are at 42 is that last little most narrow part of North Franklin. So we already have a very difficult time getting out of our driveway. We have, you know, a lovely man lives across the street, you know, break communicator, whatever, but he has a huge truck. So we're trying to deal with a few things here. So that's why I think our concern around the snow was also particularly, you know, up, Wayne, because it's like, what are we going to be able to see when we get out of there? So I would love to, you know, see the town really take some active role in reducing speed over here. I, I would, I would have loved to have known there was a study. We don't have a, one of those nifty speed signs down at the last block. And I just wanted to say that perhaps you can correct me. My understanding was when it came to the public work folks, the cops, the fire people, that it was kind of a even Steven report, as it were, that it wasn't a huge impact in regards to passing through with larger vehicles. So I just want, you know, that was mentioned at a meeting, so I just wanted to get clear on that because that seems to be the reason why the board, or I think Gail brought this to the fore to start with. So before we stir up the whole thing, I just wanted that cleared up. If one of the trustees could clear that up for me. Thanks.
Sorry, what was it you were looking to have cleared up, Jane? I wasn't quite sure what you were asking.
How we, how we are on at this?
Yeah, yeah, I was, when, when it first came up, it was an in-person meeting. And when the public works in general reported in, it didn't sound like they were coming down on, oh my, this is a major issue. It sounded like kind of a wash. And I just wanted some clarification on that. I mean, obviously I want vehicles, emergency vehicles to get through. I want speeding to stop, whatever, I mean, a lot of things I want, but I just want a clarification as to what was the report from the police, the fire people and the public works folks? What, what did they want is what I'm asking for. Got it?
Wayne, you represent two of those. I think the fire department and the public works were both very positive on it and felt that it should be single side parking, particularly the fire department for emergency vehicles. It was the police department that was somewhat neutral on it.
So how did we get here? Does anybody want to give like a recap of how we got to this decision of this side of the street, no parking?
Part of the discussion around the feedback that we got from the department heads was, you know, what side do we recommend, from where to where do we recommend it? So some of the discussion and other board members are welcome to chime in if I, if I miss something out. We first decided, we first discussed whether it should be east side or west side. The discussion there was predominantly around the amount of, the majority of or a large portion of the homes on the west side do have driveways, whereas the majority on the east side do not. I think there was some discussion about there being a curb on the east side, no curb on the west side, and a tendency to park up onto the sidewalk on the west side that we wanted to see remedied. Where was additional discussion about how far up we needed to go because the wide, the road does widen as you get up further away from Market. But, you know, and this is a concern that I have where every time I drive to Stewart's, coming over that hill, it's a blind hill. And when there's traffic on both sides, you know, it's, it's still not really comfortable for two-way traffic up there over that blind hill, in my opinion. So we discussed that as well as another, another point in the decision.
And you brought up the speeding, I remember, because you said the same thing that Annika said, that once you don't have parking on one of the sides, that might.
We discussed that, Annika, I'm a big.
On Second Street too.
Yeah, I'm a big proponent of the way you slow down traffic as you narrow roads, you put obstacles, you know, trees on the side of the road, parking on the side of the road, all those kinds of things because, you know, the, the question, the answer to the question of how fast do people drive in a 25 mile an hour zone is as fast as they feel comfortable. And, you know, I liken the difference between how fast people drive on Church Street, which is a 25, to how fast people drive on Schahery, which is a 30. And routinely, people are doing 50 on Schahery because the road is wide, there's no parking, no trees right on the road. So I completely agree that it is, you know, a potential side effect that it could increase the average speed there. If we haven't already, Gail, can we please get that speed sign put there? I thought that we had, I apologize if we haven't, we'll get it out there and we'll do that study.
Yeah, we only have one of the.
Studies, we use those studies to help us to point where we want to do the policing for speeding. What I'll tell you is it was out in front of my house for three weeks. And I just had this conversation with Officer Russo yesterday. I had to re-cage a little bit and I don't, well, because I'm out there, I have a tendency to yell at cars that go by too fast. What I'm learning is too fast in my, the way my eyeballs are gauged is probably 25 to 30 miles an hour.
Go ahead, Annika.
Hi, I'm actually sort of speaking for a neighbor, which I don't mean to do, but I know that he shared a story, and I don't believe he's on this call, but he shared a story where there was, at one, at one point, there was a truck that drove by going really, really quickly and he yelled to them, slow down. And the person stopped and became very aggressive and was speaking in a very threatening manner, backed up his truck where he was like inches from my neighbor's body and was like, no one tells me not to speed in my town. And I mean, my neighbor was like, well, look, I mean, are you about to attack me? Like, and the guy eventually just drove off, but I mean, that's the thing, it's like, sometimes it's a little intimidating when these big burly trucks are like running back and forth to like, to actually like, you know, call out at them and ask them to slow down because, you know, these types of reactions happen.
Yeah, I had what happened to me too.
Maria? You're muted still?
Maria? I would say that trying to compare North Franklin Street to South Franklin Street is like apples and kiwis. It's an entirely different kinds of vehicles that come down here. Everybody goes to Stewart's. We have a ton of trucks. We have a ton of deliveries. I haven't heard that particular story, Annika, but it doesn't surprise me at all. This end of North Franklin Street is very, very different than the other side of Second Street. And there is speeding. I can't tell you what your report says, but there is speeding, revving, vroom, vroom, all day long. I'd like to see the report. Kami, it would be helpful if we had access to these reports that were, you know, surveys, whatever that were done. That would have been helpful, obviously, prior to this, but, you know, maybe that's something that can be up on the, on the.
Wait, Tim, Tim next.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, can we maybe have the law enforcement people, you know, sit there in a speed trap occasionally just to get people nervous about, you know, so they won't use our street as a speed zone?
Where would they sit? Where, I mean, exactly since, I, I don't know where, where do you feel the best place for them to sit would be? Would it be down like on the corner of Market and, and?
I would say halfway down towards Market.
Yeah, like below the, where that blind hill is, like just below, I think would be a smart place for them to be parked.
Right, right in front of Annika's house, so you can keep an eye on her too.
Yeah.
We'll do that and we'll make sure we get that speed sign out there if it hasn't already been.
Okay. Carolyn, Todd, and then Michael next.
What we wanted to ask the village board, so there's, there are issues. It's the streets too narrow. I don't, Wayne could talk to if the fire truck would actually fit down here when we have the both sides of the street packed, and I doubt that. But also has the village board looked into having speed bumps that are very effective in other communities we've lived in to help slow that speed? That hill is a blind spot. And then when you have double parking, you can't see anything. So and anyone that drives down there knows that. So I would think like speed bumps, I don't know if that's an option or it's even been discussed. That will slow people down.
Okay.
Has not been discussed.
No, it has not. Michael?
Yeah, thanks. I'm sorry if I missed some stuff. I'm actually in another meeting that I'm gonna, more Zoom that I'm gonna have to get back to. But I just wanted to, to, I guess, show up and say, I don't like the proposal. I'm against it for two reasons. One, that I do, I think that it's a deterrent for speeding, having both sides. Like when you drive through Hudson, there are many streets where it's very narrow and you have to wait for somebody to go around and it just creates this atmosphere where you go slowly and you know that, that's what you need to do. But the other thing is, and I don't know if anybody said this, but I don't like the idea of creating competition for, for parking spots, you know, with neighbors. Because there are, you know, a number of people, some of the houses have multiple people in them and don't necessarily have parking. And when you start to have to compete for a spot, I think it's uncomfortable. You know, we have a driveway, but then we also sometimes need to, you know, have guests or need to do some yard work, need to, to, to use the spot in front of the house. And right now it works out where it's, it's, it's not so competitive. So that's, I just wanted to say that.
It wouldn't be applicable all the way to your place, I don't think, Michael, right?
Oh, it's just on the other side of the hill that you're thinking about?
Market to the firehouse.
Well, we're right across from the firehouse.
Okay. Kevin, you had your hand up a minute ago and I think we skipped you there.
Yeah, yeah, so I have the, kind of the same concerns as Michael, is most of those houses don't have driveways down there. I lived in Boston for 20 years and let me tell you, parking is insane, especially during the winter when you have a parking spot and you spend an hour shoveling it out and you need to go to the grocery store and come back and your spot's gone. I mean, there used to be bricks thrown through windows. I think it just causes, you know, it pits neighbor against neighbor. And I think it causes more problems than what it's trying to solve.
Okay. Trish?
Thank you. Yeah, I live on, on North Franklin, but I always drive in and out of town on Franklin. I never use 385. So I am on that road all the time and I've never in all my years had any difficulty. There's always people, people always are polite, you know what I mean? Either I stop and let someone or they stop and let me. I've never had any, any problem with that. So I think that the speed bump, this is just me personally, I think the speed bump idea is very cool. And I think maybe that combined with a sign at the top and a sign at the bottom that says, you know, speed limit 15, speed bump, careful around blind corner, like, like signage at the top and the bottom, but allow people to keep parking. I think that those things would, as long as a fire truck can get down with people on both sides, which I think they can, I think that a combination of those things would allow, I'm sorry, what?
Sorry, I was gonna say, there's a few things we'll have to look up from a legality standpoint until we can talk about this offline, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, that sounds, you know, in Mexico, they don't even bother with stop signs, they just have speed bumps because people will slow down, they have to. The people in the trucks will be angry, but they won't be yelling at you, they'll be just angry, right? And I think it's true about the, about the parking and the neighbors and like the competition. And if the house that's across from Annika's house is going to be renovated and someone's going to be maybe parking there soon, like there will be, it will be competition. That's my two cents.
Okay. So we'll have to look and tell you and I can get together after, but the speed limit 25 in the village, you know, I don't know that we're looking to change that speed limit. I don't know that we could.
Who's in charge of that?
I suppose we are, but.
Depends on the road.
I believe it has to go through state DOT, doesn't it, Tom?
That's correct.
We could ask.
Yeah, I mean, the process is that we write the local law, we enact it, and then we send it to DOT for approval. And if they give us their approval, then we go ahead and file with the Secretary of State. It's a process. It usually takes a good six to eight months to get the DOT to give us an opinion on it, but yeah.
And I assume the same would be true for speed bumps?
Yes. Any kind of traffic control device.
Todd?
Hey guys, so a couple of questions. First off, I know Second Street only has one side parking. How does it work on there? Is there a lot of competition for parking on Second Street?
Well, we only have one side parking up to, is it Warren Street?
Yes.
And then it's double sided the whole way up. There's not a ton of competition for parking, but where we have the library, you know, that's a big, and the, and the American Legion, so those aren't houses with multiple people. So we kind of upper, up here, it's not a big, it's not a huge issue, but speeding is a huge issue.
So.
Parking.
Do you see issues with parking before we got the municipal lot?
Okay.
Municipal lot could also be accessed probably for the houses that are closer up towards the old firehouse also.
Okay, thanks.
Or whatever.
And then the second part of that is that, you know, we, we're at 44, Jane is at 42 and the, the red house is at 40. That's the narrowest part of the street when you come down because there's a utility pole right there by, by their driveway. As a compromise, you know, do you, do you move it from where Tim and Carol are a little further down to start at the boundary line of where the, the southernmost boundary of where 40 is on the west side and move it down to Market? And then you're still getting in where that utility pole is, which is the narrowest part of the street, but you're allowing for the houses on the upper part between, between Annika's, which I guess is 38, and then Tim and, Tim and Carol's at the firehouse. And there are a couple driveways there, but then, you know, that, that, I think that clears a lot of it out too. I don't know if that's a sensible compromise.
I'm at 36, just to clarify.
So you want to move the zone north a little bit?
Yeah, actually south. Yeah, north a little bit, you're exactly right, moving north a little bit.
Because the Airbnb that's there, people are only there usually weekends, but that's where it really starts getting tight. And we live here, we have home security out front, so we probably could speak to traffic flow on this street better than probably even the Athens Police Department. We're well aware who comes and goes, we're well aware of the speeding. Some of the speeding is intentional, we believe. It seems like they stop right in certain areas and then speed up. Coming down is definitely people's speed. I don't know if it's a lot, but I do know from what we see and what we have on our home security systems, large vehicles cannot clear that section by our house in 42. I mean, it's tight, it's tight to get through there.
Maria?
Well, we don't have home security, but first of all, the Airbnb is on the market, so it's not necessarily going to be an Airbnb. So let's just be clear about that. And this house across the street is also on the market, so we don't know who's going to live in either one of those houses eventually. But I don't think we should assume the Airbnb. And the fact is that people are there seven days a week because we share a backyard with them and they're there seven days a week, not just on weekends. And there are times when there are three cars from the Airbnb.
Multiple.
On our side of the street that back almost into our driveway. At that point, the R, the R end of the street becomes so narrow that again, I am not a traffic engineer, I am not a, but in order to get through at that point, even if you're a relatively normal sized vehicle, you have to really slow down. In regards to purposeful speeding up, I, I don't know one way or the other, but I can tell you that, you know, it's, there's a lot of joyriding at the, at the end of this street. There's a lot of revving, it's loud, it's fast, I don't know how long it lasts, I don't know if it registers on some kind of equipment that gives us the answer around speed, but it's enough to make me jump. So for me, it's too fast. It's just too fast.
Well, the speeding is a whole other issue, in my, in my opinion. But Wayne, can the, can all the fire trucks get down the street?
Apparently.
Okay. That's what I thought the original issue.
Actually, there's, there's been many times I couldn't get down the road with a plow truck. I've had to wait until cars move in order to get through.
Yeah. So I think we have two separate issues going on here. Speeding seems to be, have increased all across the village this year. I think, I think everybody who lives in the village can agree with that. But Jane?
Go ahead, Jane.
Okay, just two more cents. I really appreciate hearing from everybody. The issue of any emergency vehicles, I have to leave to the emergency vehicle people, either they can or cannot get through. But I really appreciate hearing, you know, a very sensible and logical approach to, you know, mitigating this, you know, whether it's the speed bumps, whether, you know, whatever it is, it sounds like none of that has been proposed before. And I, if there's a way to be fair to both sides of the street, that's what, you know, I'm down for that. That's why I didn't come into the meeting going, this absolute, you know, has to happen. I just want to say that if there are other things we can do as a town, if it's only a process of six or eight months with the state, whatever, so what? We start. And, and I will assume that we will all just try to, you know, stay on top of the town's response around speeding. But, you know, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the opinions and points of view from the other side of the street. And being a Brooklynite, I've had plenty of fights about parking and I'm not interested. So, um, you know, I just think it's good to hear that there are things that the town can do to slow it down, although no one seems to have the answer that it's absolutely imperative that the park can be taken away because of emergency vehicle, so. And that is, as, as you were saying, Amy, that is where we started. So I'm, you know.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so right now I think what we're going to do is take it away, uh, have a little further discussion on it. And then maybe repropose something next month. Uh, we'll take a look at speeding and the potential speeding options as well. I, I do understand that the two are interrelated. Um, however, I'm not sure I would view them as a single subject. I think we can address the parking and separately address the speeding, uh, potentially. So we'll look at how we do that and propose something around that uh, in the future. So. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further comment before I close this section of the public meeting?
Thank you.
You're welcome, Tim, thank you. All right, with that, if I can find my agenda again. All right, I will close the public comment period on local law number six. And we will start a public comment period on proposed law number seven, which extends local law number two of 2020, imposing a six month moratorium on special use permits and site plan reviews for those parcels located within the waterfront or mixed use waterfront district. Uh, this is, obviously it's an extension of the existing moratorium that we put in place. Ooh, March?
Yeah, March. Late March.
Yeah, somewhere around there. Um, now we do reserve the right to rescind the moratorium. Uh, it's in place pending completion of the comprehensive plan, which optimistically should be done and enacted into law uh, early 2021. Uh, so if we can get this rescinded sooner than six months, we will do so. It's, it's strictly to protect uh, that district until we have the comprehensive planning process complete. So with that, I will open it to any public comment on this law.
I'm for it, that's my comment.
All right.
I think it's popular.
Todd, if you're talking, you're muted. Okay. All right. Yep, go ahead, Trish, sorry.
Yeah, can I just ask why, why this is being proposed? What it's trying to um, stop from happening specifically? Is there like a reason why this was proposed?
Nothing specific at this time.
There was.
It is, there.
Oh, it's for the, the.
Uh, nothing specific at this time, but uh, the purpose of it was to hold any future, any further waterfront development until we had a, you know, essentially gotten back from the residents of the village, what we want our waterfront to be, how we want to treat our waterfront district. Since that process is not complete yet, uh, we want to extend it.
Thank you. For it.
This, this all stems back to the cement crushing plant, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
All right, are there any further public comments on proposed local law number seven? Anyone else? I, I do say it three times when we're on Zoom, just in case uh, somebody couldn't get off mute fast enough. Does anyone else have any comment on proposed local law number seven? Okay, I will close the public comment period on that and close the public hearing section of the village board meeting. We do have two public comments on the agenda. The first is Sandra Strauss. Is she on? I don't see her.
I don't see her.
I don't think she made it, no.
Um, she stopped me earlier this week, I guess. She uh, wants to discuss fluoride in the water further. So we had, we had talked about that at a previous board meeting, so I suspect she'll come to another uh, meeting here in the future. The second on our public agenda is Marjorie Weisenheim. Who I don't see either.
I thought she was here for a minute.
Well, I get, uh, if she does come back on, I'm happy to uh, to allow her to jump in. Having been bumped off of plenty of meetings in the past because my internet kicks out or I click the wrong button. I'll make, uh, I'll make concessions there. Okay, so we'll come back to that. Hers is relative to uh, the alleyway and potential encroachment into the alleyway. So we'll discuss that and we've got a complaint in about that as well. Okay, so we'll come back if they happen to show up, we'll come back to those. All right, so we'll move to the less exciting portion here of the agenda. The first is, we have a facility use application for the gym. Um, it is for an AA meeting. They, it is, it's uh, six, six November. I don't see a time on here, MJ, do you have, did they happen to give you a time?
Seven PM, I think it is.
Okay. All right, and they do give us a uh, a COVID plan. They address COVID and how they're going to meet, which I appreciate. Uh, MJ, I assume no conflicts?
Think she might be on mute.
Yeah.
MJ, you're muted if you're with us there.
What was the question, sorry?
Any conflicts on six, uh, six November for the facility use?
No, we looked at the calendar, yeah, we checked the calendar.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
I will.
Amy's making a motion to approve the application, sorry?
I'll second it.
Ricky seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carries, thank you.
One thing, this might be every Friday night, I'm not too sure. I think I, I think she filled it out wrong.
All right, well, based on this application, we're, what we've approved is only 11/6.
Okay.
What they want to do every Friday night, they need to get another application in.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll approve the application as written, which is uh, the 6th of November. Okay? Any questions or comments on the minutes as submitted?
Nope.
No.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the October 14th, 2020 minutes?
I'll offer it.
Rob?
I'll second.
Who's that, Amy?
It was Gail.
Gail, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carries. Questions or comments on the vouchers?
No. I didn't have any.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented?
I will.
Ricky?
I'll second.
Is that Gail?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So carries. Um, so from what I heard today, and we can discuss this a little bit, uh, what I heard is postpone any decision on local law number six uh, and have further discussion both on parking and uh, speeding. Any of the board members have any further comment on how we proceed with that?
I agree, it needs more discussion.
No, I'll get with Roger on the speeding issue though.
Okay. Okay. Um, I did hear however, that there's no significant uh, um, issues regarding local law number seven. Uh, so the resolution would be, be it resolved that the village board approve adoption of local law number seven, which will extend local law number two of 2020, thereby imposing a six month moratorium on special use permits and site plan reviews for those parcels located within the waterfront or mixed use waterfront district. Would anyone like to make that law motion?
Before, before we do that, um, we have to just do some um, housekeeping now since we have, we're moving it forward and six is not going to be six anymore, this now has to be six.
Uh, okay.
Secretary of State's office won't take it out of order. Um, so this will now be local law number six and the parking will become number seven or whatever.
You got that, MJ?
Yeah. I will promise to fix the website so that it says the right numbers, put them wrong.
It's not a big deal. Um, and I'll, I'll send the recording documents to Mary Jo so she can sign them and stamp them with the correct number on it.
Okay.
All right, so I will amend that resolution. Now, the proposed resolution would read local law number six, otherwise as stated.
I'll make the motion.
Amy?
I'll second it.
Rob? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Correspondents? Um. So the first is this Champlain Hudson Power Express. Continued issues with that, that they filed applications, et cetera. Again, it does not come through the village. The next one, MJ, I was missing, I only got the first sheet, um, but I'll talk, this is from Hecate, sorry, this is Flint mine, uh, which actually I spoke to their lawyer earlier today, so I'll talk a little bit more about uh, the solar projects uh, at the end of the meeting. Um, it's, it. I'm not sure what this is. It, it looks like this is just that they have filed their application. Um, it's not, it's not approved yet, but they have filed. Uh, we have filed uh, concerns as well regarding the dam as we've discussed in the past, and I'll cover that uh, at the end. The next one is the Hecate uh, solar, uh, and it talks about uh, essentially the next date uh, pertinent to us is written issues and list statements are due by October 30th. Uh, and we have gotten our uh, concerns in, uh, we're represented by the same lawyers that represent the town and village of Cuxackee and our concerns were included in the written notice that went to both Hecate and Flint Mine. Next one is Catskill Mountain Housing Development, receiving funding for mobile home and trailer replacements. So if anyone is aware of anybody who meets those criteria. Uh, the next one actually was really good because I was unaware of a New York Rural Water Association. Uh, the, the notice simply states that I'm the point of contact, uh, but I went on their website. It doesn't list any specific services, but there are numbers to call. The elected officials part is still under construction on the website. So I'm not sure what they offer to us, uh, but I will make some calls later this week and see if they can help us with what we've been discussing on the uh, uh, water pricing and, and they do specifically have a class in September, I think it was, about uh, structured pricing to an affordability of improvements. So I'm not sure uh, if we can, that's a ways out though. I'd like to have this resolved obviously before then.
If I'm not mistaken, they'll also, by joining a membership, they'll also command and assist the DPW with finding water leaks too.
They do, that was one thing that was, we are members. We are members, Rob, so we can reach out and ask for that help.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's the, the primary thing on their webpage is the, the equipment they have to help find and measure.
Yes.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Yes, they are the ones who we have called in the past. They're the ones who we called in the smoke test. Um, they're, they're also the ones that me and Anthony have been taking our water uh, classes through. And since we're members, we get a discount with those classes that we are required to have for our water licenses.
Okay, great, so it sounds like we are taking advantage of it. I was just unaware, but now that I'm aware, I want to see if there are services to help us do some of that structured pricing uh, that we've been talking about. Okay, next one is Nymer, we talked about this at the last meeting. Um, but Rob, I need your help with this. Both of these um, corrective actions, they're looking for, both we've addressed already last year, but they're coming back with the same two, which are preventative maintenance program on water and sewer, which we can show additional evidence of as of this week. So I want to make sure we get credit for that with Nymer, so they're aware of the work that we're doing on that. And then the second is recreation employee training, which I think we talked to last year.
Yeah, I uh, I, I still have the, we still have a, we registered with them on the line, so I can, I, I'll check it again. It's been several months since I checked for any upcoming training. But I'll, I'll check the website again tomorrow um, and see if there's any training that we need to utilize on that.
Okay, this is something, if you, you can help me out and get something written up this week on this.
Okay.
That would help quite a bit. And uh, get it to MJ, get it on letterhead and then uh, we'll, we'll get it signed and out to them. I don't think there's anything new and unique about it. It's, it's all things we talked to them about last year and have already started to address.
Mm-hmm.
And that was it for correspondence. Okay, so I said I was going to talk about police reform a little bit. Um, there is an executive order uh, from Governor Cuomo, executive order number 203, uh, which talks about a requirement um, for me. Uh, any, any municipality with a police force must conduct a review of that police force, their policies and procedures with a specific um, eye towards uh, diversity and inclusion and, and minority uh, treatment of the police force and what our policies and procedures state. What kind of training do we get? Uh, it's, it's fairly inclusive. We put together a, a panel of 10 people, uh, including a judge. Uh, the police chief is on it. It includes uh, business owners, it includes the principal of the school, it includes uh, several black members of the community. Um, and we have been meeting for a couple of months now on this. We've come up with a prioritized list of categories that we're going after that we formed some subcommittees on. The first is policy review. Um, and so I spoke with that team yesterday. Um, and our policies need a fair amount of work overall, not just around diversity and inclusion, uh, but administrative policies, uh, the new bail reform laws are not accounted for in them. So uh, we're going to reach out to DJ, DCJS, um, get their help with it. Uh, but we've got a fair amount of work to do. Uh, so Tal, that'll be coming to you for review as we move through it as well. That said, um, we're going to kind of work those in parallel. So we'll deal with the administrative portions of the policies. Uh, at the same time, that subcommittee team will be looking at where are the right places to include uh, diversity and inclusion, to include training uh, and, and other policy revisions that are required to support. You know, the, the, the executive order and ensure that uh, we do have a workforce that is diverse and inclusive. Um, the next subcommittee is training. Um, and Gail has already, Gail's leading that one. Uh, she's already uh, found a number of possible uh, training opportunities. There is some interesting things there. There, you know, uh, any kind of DNI training or inherent bias training. Uh, there really isn't any dedicated. It's given during the academy, but it's not a recurring training. It's not something that they get on a recurring basis. Uh, and really, they only get it if they get in trouble, right? Which is not really what we're looking for. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity there uh, that we're gonna, that we're going to address and take care of.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Of course you may.
With um, them doing it that, on the uh, computer, that training on the computer, we can make sure it's done once a year because it'll be logged out, they'll get a certificate and we'll have to follow through and make sure it's done every year.
Okay, and we're also looking, obviously everybody's doing this, it, it's not just Athens, right? So uh, the, the county sheriff's doing it, Catskill, Catskill's doing it. Um, and I had spoken to both of them earlier, um, about putting some training together, right? I'm okay with, with recurring training, but I'm of an opinion that DNI training is hard to do. And DNI training done, DNI training to do it right, a, a light bulb needs to go, go off. It has to hit you personally. Uh, and it's tough to do on a computer. Um, and so we're looking at, we, we spoke to um, And it's tough to do on a computer. Um, and so we're looking at, we, we spoke to, um, a trainer who used to work with the City of New York Police Department. Um, and she's now doing contract work in her. She started before all this came out, uh, but now there's quite a niche for her. Uh, and I think, you know, after, uh, after spending some time talking to her, uh, we may look to bring her in. And, uh, it's relatively inexpensive. And if we couple with the, with the sheriff's department, with Catskill, uh, I think she's, I think she's one who can get that light bulb to go off, uh, for a lot of people. So I want to make sure we do something effective there. The next, uh, bucket, and this is in priority. So, so I'll just go through them and then I'll talk a little bit more. Policing, your policy review is the, is the highest priority. Training is the second highest priority. Community policing is the third highest priority. Then there's governance, community services and fundraising and hiring. And hiring is last, and I'll talk a little bit about why hiring is last. Uh, that's not an accident. Uh, I'll talk about that in a minute. So we talked about policy review. We talked about training. The third, um, committee, subcommittee is my subcommittee, which is on community policing. Um, and this is, we don't have a policy today on community policing. I think some of our officers do it very well. Some of our officers are not inclined to do it, uh, as well. Um, and we want to make sure that we make it policy. And we are looking at what are the best practices that are out there? How do you engage with a community? What are best practices for engaging with a community? And there are big differences, obviously, uh, between engaging with a community in New York City or Brooklyn than there are in the Village of Athens. Uh, and there are a number of ways to do it. Um, there's some really good things that are already there that we can just take advantage of, like a program called Are You Okay? Uh, which just does automatic dialing to seniors and latchkey kids and, you know, whoever needs it. And I want to make sure that we get that out in Athens and that if there's a need to respond in Athens, that it's local Athens police who are responding, right? To give them that opportunity to be out in the community. Um. There's things like neighborhood watches and neighborhood e-watches. Uh, and there are platforms that are restricted essentially to neighborhoods. So you could do it on Facebook, but that's a little too open. Uh, there is a platform called Neighborhood, I think is what it's called. Um, which is, uh, essentially it's, uh, another online social media style platform that's capable of a lot more than just a, a neighborhood watch. But it is a tool that's used by a lot of communities to do that sort of thing. Uh, but that's, as you get into community policing, it talks about how do you intertwine the police force and the community in such a way that there, there's opportunities to work together and touch points that occur there. Uh, how do we do a better job of tying in with the local churches? How do we do a better job of tying in with the local businesses? I don't like that the police right now are afraid to go have a meal in uniform at Crossroads. They should be there all the time, right? Go in and have your meal, obviously not having a beer, but go sit down and have a meal. So you're part of the community and people are seeing you out there. And we had some bad experiences where, uh, we don't do that very often. I want to get that corrected and get them out there. Um, the number of other topics that we're looking at from a community policing standpoint. What governance is about, which is the next priority, and, and the reason we moved this one down, I think this is a very important one, but we wanted to get the policies. We wanted to get the community policing, uh, understood and put into policy. Because then the governance piece is, how do we make sure that any good ideas that we have, anything that we put in place, uh, when we lose, you know, the current police force that we have in five or 10 or 15 years, that it all stays in place. And that we have some, call it civic watch over the police. And so essentially what we're talking about is that this panel or a panel like it, over time stays in, in effect. And we do, you know, we'll pick a three year or a five year cycle where this panel that's meeting now reviews policies so that every policy's been reviewed every three to five years, right? So we've got them on a cycle. That if, if something occurs that this, this panel looks at it and goes back and looks at, okay, what did we enact back in 2020? When we did this, and do we need to adjust based on what we're seeing today? So we want to make sure we've got something that's not just to, you know, answer the requirement of today based on Governor Cuomo's executive order, but that is in place and stays in place and continues uh, to, to update, uh, as, you know, as laws change, as perceptions change, and as our community changes. And we're seeing more and more diverse community in Athens, which is a good thing. We want everybody to feel comfortable all the time, right? So that's, uh, want to make sure that governance captures and codifies the ideas that we put in place. Community services and fundraising is kind of an interesting one. Uh, and we wanted to, you know, while we were brainstorming some of this stuff, we talked about, you know, there's a line between community policing, which is really needs to stay focused on the tie in between the community and the police force. But there were also a lot of good ideas on just what could we do as Athens to be a more inclusive, uh, environment, right? And to make Athens more inclusive. And so we've talked a lot about things like block parties and, and, um, opportunities like that. Uh, and obviously yes, we could get the police involved, but even if we don't, how do we just get, make Athens more inclusive? And we've got a really good opportunity, as small as we are, to be a place where everybody knows their neighbors. Right? And that is the, you know, the, the most important thing from an inclusivity standpoint is to get to know people. And to get to know people who don't look like you or think like you all the time, uh, and realize, uh, that their opinions are valid, that they're intelligent people that, right? All those stereotypes and biases tend to get thrown out the window when you actually meet and talk and mingle with people. Uh, so we, we've talked a lot about that and how do we, how do we take advantage of the fact that we are a small community? And, and, and bring something around with that beyond just the policing piece. Hiring is the lowest priority. And the reason hiring is the lowest priority is it is somewhat of a fixed process. We're required to go through what's called the civil service, um, aptitude testing. Um, and they provide us with a list of candidates. What they haven't provided me over the course of over two months now is what the demographics are of that civil service testing. Uh, and I haven't reached out now that I'm saying that I haven't reached out to them in two weeks to remind them that they promised they would get that to me. So that's something we're asking for on hiring, but, um, we are sort of legally bound right now, uh, to go through that civil service, uh, portal. That said, we can make sure we put a little heat on them, uh, to ensure that the civil service group is doing their part to ensure that the candidates that we do get represented diverse, you know, represent the diversity of the community. We did talk about, you know, we have, there are 14 officers on the, on the rolls today. However, the majority of the policing is done by four officers, uh, and one of those officers is black. So we do have some diversity on the force in as much as the hours of work being done on the workforce, uh, is relatively represented. If you look at the workforce as a whole with 14 officers, it doesn't look so represented. Uh, but the officers who are on patrol, um, are relatively represented, but we need to make sure we continue to have opportunities. We have no, uh, female officers right now. Uh, we did sponsor two, but neither, neither wound up coming to us. So, uh, we need to make sure that, we need to make sure, A, that we're finding those opportunities and B, that those opportunities are provided to us via the civil service testing. That is the bulk of what I wanted to say on the policing review. Any questions or comments on that from the board? No? I'll open it up briefly if there's any questions or comments elsewhere. Go ahead, Mar. Did you have something, Maria?
Oh, I just had a question. Um, you know, the, the concept that the board, that this, um, body would remain in place for a period of time. To the best of my knowledge, Gail is the only woman in this group. And, um, I would like very much to see other women in it, um, and other women from the community. Um, you got some fabulous ones in the Village of Athens, and I don't think that would be hard to do. Um, so that's something that I have strong feelings about. And I think it would mirror what you're trying to do, what we're all trying to do. Um, you know, DEI is not just a concept, it's a reality.
Okay. Thank you. Carol, you have your hand up. It's, your hand is barely in screen there. It's. Go ahead.
I just had, um, I wanted to circle back and maybe this is more for Gail and, um, Roger, because they work, uh, so closely with the police department. Um, I know, um, community like beat policing that was done in the fifties and sixties where officers actually get out of their vehicle and walk certain sections. Um, because I know when we're down at the park on Friday nights, usually it's one or two of the same officers. And they have a great rapport with all the locals that come out. Kids run up to them because they recognize them from the school. So, I mean, I know what you're saying about like trying to get them out more. I don't know if that, where they maybe, you know, you're not walking the entire village, but maybe one street occasionally, um, so people can see them on a regular basis and get to know them. I got to know most of the officers from down at Music in the Park. And it's always really warm and it's like a really nice contact with them where you're not calling them for police matters.
Yep. Go ahead, Gail.
I think they've started doing that more. I don't know now that the weather's changing if that will continue. But, um, you know, they've been out on their bike more and walking more. So that is something what we've already instructed them to do.
Yeah, that came up in the very first meeting, Carol, and we said, this is low hanging fruit. Just do this now.
Oh, I missed it.
No, I, I didn't mention that. Yeah, that did come up.
Hear that. I think it'd be nice to see them out.
Yep.
And any local events that are going on, we've, um, requested that they go there, whether they're asked to police anything or not, but just show up at the event like a hayride the other night and, and different things like that. Just make your presence known.
Yep.
I think it's good.
The, uh, the resource officer, uh, Officer Place, for those of you who know him, uh, he, because he's at the school as often as he is, has a great rapport, uh, with a lot of the kids and he went to a local birthday party, right? That's the kind of stuff we want to encourage. Right? In uniform, at a birthday party with the kids, handing out cake, right? That's, that's good stuff. Okay. Um, so steering committee and comprehensive plan update, um, Gail, do you have any update on that?
Um, there's two upcoming public hearings, uh, one for the steering committee itself, except for, uh, November 12th. Um, and he's working with Amy, and I think Amy is already taking care of this to publicize it.
Yeah, it should, it should drop like between tomorrow and Saturday on the.
I thought the 12th was the joint village town board meeting.
That's December 2nd, I thought you put.
Okay.
The 12th is the date of the open here. Yeah.
You're right, December 2nd, yeah.
And then a joint public hearing for the village and town is, uh, December 2nd. Uh, I think we have to publicize that.
We do?
I believe so.
Okay. Um, I have all the info for the November 12th. I'm just waiting for one thing from Nan. Um, she has a, I guess a copy of the full document as it sits right now for people to review. So I need to be able to upload that. Um, but I think we identified that if it's up by Saturday, then it's, we're good. We have plenty of time. So I'm hoping to actually get it up by Friday if she can get me that document. So everybody should have that info. Nancy?
So it does say notice of these public hearings are required by law to be at least 10 days ahead of it.
Yeah.
Can you unmute Nancy?
I believe you need me to unmute you.
I believe what she's saying is can you unmute me?
I can only ask you to unmute.
Okay, I'm, I'm unmuted. Um, as far, so today was, was, uh, the last day, or tomorrow's the last day for the steering committee to submit our comments for the draft. And then, and then once Nan just assembles all those comments, then it'll be ready for publication.
Okay. So I bet she'll get it to me by Friday if I don't, Nan.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, and if you're subscribed to the blog, you'll get it right to your email. If not, I'll post it on Facebook as well. So you should be able to find it if you're, and there'll be a hard copy, I believe, available for review in the office.
Yes, there will be a hard copy, just like there was for the, um, the survey.
Says available at cost. Hard copies available at cost at the village office. Ahead of each public hearing.
Will there also be digital copies?
Yes. Yes, it'll be on the website for download.
Oh, okay. I just didn't understand. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to post the whole thing on the, on the web.
Just, just know that it's, it's a pretty massive document.
Massive. So, yeah. No, it's no surprise. Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
I don't have.
We're still targeting essentially January, right?
Yeah. But, um, Gail, I don't have the info on the December 2nd. So if you can send me anything I need to know to publicize that. Or I circle back with Nan and, and either way, but we have a little time on that. So.
All right. Thanks.
Slip lining project. Rob, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Um, I haven't, I wasn't around when they did that, so I don't, I'm not exactly sure how.
Okay. So what this is, um, what the slip lining project is, if you recall when we did the clean energy community, uh, we received a grant and we applied that grant to, uh, our aging sewer system because we have a major, uh, what's called an INI problem, inflow and, what's the other I?
Influx.
What it means is storm water gets into our wastewater and it makes our wastewater plant run over, at or over capacity far too often. Um, and, you know, if we want to continue to expand, you know, if, if other houses want to come in, uh, other businesses want to come in, uh, we tend to be running, particularly if we get some rain, right up at capacity. So. What's that?
I'd say mayor, I was there, I was there Monday and I was there Tuesday. I talked to the guys. It's all done. There was no complaints, no trouble, no nothing. They did their job and they left.
Good. So it meant, it meant some people out on North Washington, uh, right at Second Street. And some of the businesses down Second Street were without water for about six hours.
Six hours. Yes, they're all cut. They're all done.
And essentially what they do is they run.
And they'll be done.
Yep. They run a flexible pipe or flexible hose through it, and then they inflate that hose out against the sides of the, uh, the sewer pipe, uh, to prevent water from, from leaking in, uh, and, and making it. So when we did the smoke testing that, that Wayne was talking about earlier, uh, we identified where our hotspots were in the village. Uh, this looked like one of the worst areas, so we addressed it first. Uh, this needs to be something that every year we find a way to, to do a little here, a little there, whether it's, you know, not all of it's going to be able to be slip lined. Some of it we're going to have to dig up uh, and do a little more extensive work. We have some very old sewer systems and water systems in the village. So we're trying to just make sure we start to put a plan in place to, to knock off some every year. And this was the highest priority area. So I don't know that we'll see a huge impact to INI based on this. I think we'll see some, uh, but over a couple of years of doing some of these high, high priority, we'll start to see it, we'll start to see a significant impact. Good. Old business. So there's two pieces of old business here. The first is the fire protection contract with the town. The second is the lease, uh, and the check for the comprehensive plan with the town. Uh, Tal, I think you and I need to sit down and develop a strategy. And then we need to sit down across the table from Rob in Virginia and, uh, and negotiate this. I think that's what it's going to come down.
The last communication that we got from them on that particular issue, or actually partially on that issue was that, um, the town will pay the rent, um, as soon as we send them a bill for it.
I thought they said the utilities as soon as we send them a bill.
No, utilities, rent, same thing, right?
Uh, okay. All right. So we just need to get them a bill. Um, they said the same comprehensive plan, they said, send us a bill. We haven't gotten that yet. Uh, the fire plan, you know, it looked from the email, Gail, like his only sticking point was the 2% increase annually.
He's got all kinds of complaints here. I was gonna try and go over.
You want to talk to it a little bit? You want to talk to it a little bit, or?
Yeah, he, he has the feeling that the village is trying to, um, just use the town as a moneymaker. And, um, I guess, you know, his first question is where does the 2% come from? Well, that's like, to me, a no brainer. That's like cost of increase of goods that we, that they're responsible for, so.
They have to maintain all the equipment and, and.
That price goes up every year. They haven't had an increase in, what, four or five years?
Yeah.
Um, and they're talking about the lease, he's talking about the lease of the building. That went up every year with no justification and again, cost of utilities go up every year. That's why they're, um, being, and many years ago, when we got rid of the village court, um, after that, we went through and did a square footage, research to see, you know, what the village uses versus what the town uses. And then that was figured in on why their lease payment went up.
Yeah, and anything outside of two years is interesting but irrelevant.
So then he's saying that, um, you know, the town has done everything pretty much and the village has not reciprocated.
Okay. Well, why don't, uh, Gail, Tal and I get together and develop kind of a negotiation strategy on this? And then, uh, and then we'll set up that meeting and sit across the table from them and see what we can get here.
The last time we tried to set up a meeting, they basically rejected it.
We gotta keep trying in good faith.
Yep, absolutely. But just so everybody knows, it's not like we haven't tried.
Good.
And then can I just, one other thing that has to do with the town? Without that second parcel of land, he doesn't think he can get it past his board.
I have no problem with that. I just was never asked for in the past.
Right, and that's what I told him. I told him that that is, he said, well, we talked about him right in the very beginning, remember, Gail? I said, yeah, so why doesn't your lawyer have that in there? You're saying that, that we're holding it up. Your lawyer should have had that in the papers that they sent. You know?
Again, this just underscores, I, I kept asking them to do a title search and they've never done one. That, all of these issues that they bring up would have easily been answered if we just had a title report.
So, so I think we should have a meeting also.
Yep.
If we can possibly set it up.
Okay. That's everything on the agenda. So I'll go, uh, here, Gail?
Um, Planning Board meeting, um, the library should have their plans for what their grant will be like, um, there. And also there was someone that is interested in buying that parcel south of Brick Row for, um, it's called the Glam Ground. The company is Treetopia, so if anybody wants to look that up, but they saw that there's a moratorium right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard that he wants to reach out. I forget who talked to me about that. But I gave my number and he, he wants to reach out, but yeah.
Does that the same people, the sign is different now when you come back um, from the thruway when you're going on Leeds Athens?
Two different parcels, though.
Yeah, I know, but I can't write the Treetopia now.
Oh, okay, I haven't seen that.
Same organization.
Yeah, he, there is nothing, there, there is no permitted use of that land today.
Right, right. They know that. They know that, that there's a moratorium. Um, and then a key for the police department, they are still requesting that for the, um, office so they can pick their stuff up and drop stuff off.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that. MJ, can we get them a key, please?
She's still here?
She's still here.
She just muted.
She's muted so she can curse my name quietly.
I'll mute myself, too.
MJ, you still with us?
I think she can hear us, but we can't hear her.
All right, well, somebody make sure that.
I'll email her.
Give Roger a key to the offices in the minutes for the next meeting, please.
And that's all I have.
All right. Ricky?
No, I already told you, what I had, uh, the lining of the sewer went fine, no complaints and everything went fine.
All right. Rob?
I have a few things, um, as I talked to you this afternoon, this is more or less for the rest of board so they know what's going on. We hit a roadblock with this pickup truck that we ordered for the DPW. Um, unfortunately Ford shut down production of the 2020 models and now they're building the 21 models. Um, Romeo Ford had an identical truck that we specked out. Um, it was a, I think it was a 21 model. The downside of it is it had a $7,000 plow already attached to it that the dealership installed. Um, and that, the, the issue is that we're, we're already gonna use our old plow to save money. Um, so I've been wheeling and dealing with the dealership for the last two days. Um, and they talked to the owner of the dealership to try to remove the old plow so we can put our plow on it because we would have signed the papers yesterday if they were able to go for it. The unfortunate side is they won't take the old, take the plow off. Um, so what, what, uh, what happens now at this point is the only option Romeo Ford is offering to do for us is to have us order a 21 model at the same price that we approved. Um, but we're almost into November now and to expedite the production of the truck, it's gonna be minimumly about two months before we get it. Which means that we're already down one truck, that truck that they got now that pick up, the old pickup truck's out of service. And actually, uh, we actually declared that surplus property too to auction that off. Um, so I don't know what the rest of board's feelings are on it. I talked to Anthony this afternoon to tell him what's going on because Romeo is blaming it on Ford that they were the ones that, um, screwed this up. Um, because we were led to believe that if we ordered this truck back in August, we'd have it right about now. Um, so they're blaming on Ford. So Romeo offered us that if we had, give them an order number, hopefully, possibly tomorrow, if, if we, if we confirm to order this 21 model, they can give Ford an order number to expedite the production of this truck and maybe get it in a little bit sooner. Uh, but they're not making no guarantees, minimally, they're committing to like minimally two months on it, on the 21 model, so. Um, I don't know what the rest of board's feelings are on that. I, I talked to Anthony. Anthony's willing to bite the bullet and make do with what he's got if he has to plow the parking lots out with a, the backhoe in the meantime. He said he'd be willing to do it. Uh, maybe the town would, uh, help us out a little bit there with the alleyways or what, you know? They use the pickup truck also for the parking lots as well, so, uh, he seems, uh, be confident that he can make it work. Hopefully, maybe we won't get much snow. Uh, so I don't know what the board feels on it. I don't have a problem in, in, Anthony doesn't have a problem, you know, going ahead and to order the 21 model.
Well, I agree with you, Rob, that we should pass a law that there should be no snow this, uh, this way.
Yes.
In lieu of that, and, and, uh, at the risk of pressing Wayne's salesman button here, which I'm not gonna do, we'll have, we'll have conversations offline. Um, what I asked Rob to do is go look at Chevy, go look at Dodge, go look at, I don't know that Nissan or Toyota make a 350 model, but um, let's go look at some other options out there. I understand that there's a single axis, single axle, uh, benefit to Ford. I don't understand it, but I understand.
Oh, it's the straight ax, well, it.
Straight axle, it doesn't, doesn't matter, uh, to me. Uh, what's the pricing difference? Can we get one faster? And then let's make a decision on if that Ford versus Chevy, uh, benefit is worth the potential three month wait and, and two month wait or whatever it is, and let's have that conversation.
Okay.
We don't have another meeting until November 18th.
Yeah, that's the problem.
We already have a resolution to purchase a truck for a given amount of money.
Okay.
Um, uh, I don't know, somebody want to say something?
No, I mean, so if we have the resolution, then you guys can just go ahead with it if you decide that it's.
I would assume so unless the resolution was very specific, which it may well have been, where we said we're gonna authorize the purchase of a Ford F-350, whatever, so we'll have to look.
I think it was. I think it was.
I think it was, too.
That's kind of what I remember, yeah.
Anybody else have anything to say before I move on to the next item?
I just feel like, I just want, I mean, there's again, a time crunch. Um, and I don't know what the price difference is between the 2020 and the 2021, but seeing, I, I would bet that it's more. And so they're willing to give it to us at the price that they agreed to, so I, I feel like that's a, that's a good deal, but I don't know how everybody else feels about that. I feel a little under the gun because of the timing of the weather and everything.
Yeah, the salesman I've been dealing with down at Romeo Ford said he would also apply for bid assistance for us, for the village, so that, that way Ford would commit to, uh, letting us have this new truck for the same price as the 2020 model, so.
All right, Wayne, I'm gonna press the salesman button here. Wayne, if we could get a Chevy $5,000 less and get it delivered in November, would you still rather wait till January for a Ford?
Honestly, yeah, stick with the Fords. Because that's, well, our whole plea is Ford. I mean, between parts, uh, they're all the same. Um, like Robbie said, the front ends are a lot stronger than the, than the Chevy's. And, I mean, I've been working on, on trucks almost 25 years, so, and I've always seen, seen Ford's always been the better work truck.
Okay. All right, then proceed with putting the order in, Rob.
Okay, I'll get my call.
We don't need another resolution for that.
I don't believe so. Um, the second thing is, uh, Anthony talked to me about the internet service for the new DPW building because Jason needs to know, uh, as soon as possible. Um, my recommendation, let's toss it between state telephone and Mid Hudson Cable. I mean, my recommendation would probably be to go with the state telephone.
That would be mine as well. What do they, what do they have now?
Um, I believe it's Mid Hudson down there at.
MJ, have we switched over to the village building?
No, no, I didn't.
Why don't we have that conversation this week and see if we can get the whole package? Because he was, he was anxious to work with us.
Yeah, okay. Um.
Is that okay, MJ? Can you, can you get with Mark this week on that?
Yeah, yeah, we were gonna do that and then COVID hit and then everything stopped as far as that's concerned.
Um, the third thing is, um, Mark Smith, the sales representative from Auctions International for all this equipment we're gonna be selling. I've been talking to him. Um, he's willing to come down to the village here. I think it would be great because I think it would save me a lot of time and aggravation as well, because we got so many pieces of equipment we're gonna put up on the auction. Um, and then also Mary Jo was able to get us the title that we've been looking for for the international dump truck down here that's going up on auction. Uh, because they won't sell no vehicles until they have a copy of the title and Roger's also doing a VIN verification for the old police car because we weren't, we don't know where the title is for that car. So he's gonna do a VIN verification for that, so we're able to sell that, too. Um, so Mark Smith is willing to, um, sometime next month or possibly even December, he's booking up fast. He's willing to come down, meet with me and, uh, maybe I'll have Wayne come along too. Because, uh, Wayne might have some stuff that we're probably gonna put on surplus with, from the fire department, too. So I figure we'll kill two birds with one stone and Mark would, you know, come down, take the pictures, write everything up and then go back and put everything on the website for us. Um, they did, he did email me a new contract because the contract that we had for two years expired. Uh, so I can print that out and I don't know if you need to sign that as the mayor or I can just sign it as a representative of the village.
Probably requires.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Probably requires my signature.
All right, okay, I'll print that out and then have you sign that. Um, and so I haven't, he hasn't gotten back to me yet on a official date. I told him I was available any Wednesday to have him come down and, like, like I said, it'll save me so much time and aggravation. Uh, because we got so many different pieces of equipment to sell and stuff and he knows what pictures he wants to take because I think there's, he likes to have six to eight pictures for vehicles. So he knows what pictures to take as well. I did send pictures up there, but, uh, he's willing to come down, take his own pictures or whatever. I don't know, maybe he didn't like the ones I sent him a lot, but. Um, and then the last thing is, uh, Anthony gave me prices on the, uh, on the salt shed pieces, the block and the carport sections that go up on the top. Uh, so I don't know if you want me to break that down for you now or, uh, I can give you the, um, I can give you the prices on the carports anyways.
The carport, didn't we?
The carports, the one would go over the, where the fuel tank and they also mount, makes one side of it like a storage area to store miscellaneous equipment like barricades, I guess. And then the, uh, the other carport would go on top of, uh, where the salt shed's gonna be. It'll, it'll serve as the roof of the salt shed.
Okay.
So they gave me two different prices on those plus, uh, three different price quotes from three different companies on the, uh, the concrete block. So.
What do you have? What's the total cost of a salt shed?
Um, well, the carport, they're gonna, the DPW's gonna do the work, so there's, they're gonna, it's an in-house job, so we're just, the material, uh, 16 by 16 by 8 carport, that's the one for the, where the diesel fuel tank's gonna go. Uh, the first price quote is $2,865. Um, the second price quote for the same size structure is, well, I'm sorry, the first price is from Kenneth Robusman. Uh, the second price is from a company called Carolina Carport. Uh, that, they came in at $3,735.
Big discrepancy.
Yes. Uh, Kenneth Robusman, I believe he's local, so he's, uh, he's not too far away, too. And he, um, I don't know where Carolina Carport is. I've never heard of them before.
Robbie, uh, Carolina's the place up in Selkirk.
Is that, okay.
Yep, and Robusman is Eagle up in, uh, the Baltimore.
All right, okay, Eagle, okay. All right, um, the second one, the second price quote for the other carport that's gonna go over top of the salt shed, if I'm, correct me wrong, if I go wrong there, Wayne. Um, 20 by 30 by 6, the first price quote from Eagle, which is Kenneth Robusman, is $3,745. Carolina Carport came in at $5,105. And then, uh, you want me to break down the three different prices on the block, too?
Uh, no, sorry.
Um, well, the lowest from what I'm seeing here on paper, it looks like, uh, it almost looks like bonded concrete. It almost looks like bonded concrete. Oh, yeah. It looks like bonded concrete. Is, came in at the lowest on the block.
Is it, is, are they? Are they building and pouring a frame for us or is it just the price of the?
No, they, they come in, they'll, they'll truck in the block, how many, whatever amount we need. Um, looks like they. They're basing this on a minimum of 10 cubes. There's, they spell everything out here in a long email. Um. They're basing on, uh, they deliver it on a low boy tractor trailer. Um, you know, they're also charged for delivery, of course, too. Um, uh, like. They're just between, it looks like it runs between 125 to $130 for delivery.
What's the price?
Well, that, that's like I said, I can break it down. They got a, there's a bunch of numbers on here. Um, it looks like bonding concrete's the lowest so far. On the three price quotes.
Are we talking under, under 3,000?
Yes, that's what it looks like. Yep.
MJ, did you move funds into the salt shed line item?
Yes.
How much is there? It's a little over six, right?
Uh huh. Yeah. I don't have the exact figure, but. So it's six plus seven, seven, it was thirteen, that's about 13,000.
So there's plenty for a, for a salt shed that looks like it's going to come in under eight.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I mean, I'm confident enough to say we got the, the money's there to pay, to get this done this year. Um. And, uh, you know, we sell all that equipment there. We'll probably get. Uh, all of that and probably then some back and put it back in that account. So.
Yeah. Okay. So would anyone be willing? So I, we kind of do need a price here, but so give me the two lowest, uh, bids names then. So the lowest bid.
The two lowest would be bonded concrete. Looks like they came in at the lowest. And then this, the second to the lowest would be, uh, grand.
No, no. So bonded concrete is the lowest bid for the, um.
Block.
For the blocks. And then the 3745.
Sorry. Sorry. Yeah. All right. You're talking about the carport. All right. So the lowest on the carport. Is, uh, Eagle, was it Eagle Tool rental, Wayne? Eagle Tool, I think it is called.
I think they just changed it to Eagle.
Eagle?
Yeah. Eagle Sales, maybe.
Yeah. He's, he's the lowest on both carports actually.
Okay. So we don't have the exact numbers here for the bonded concrete, but we're, we're definitely under three grand, Rob?
Yeah. If I see any, it looks like from what I see here, I'm, I'm got a bunch of emails here. Um. From what I see, yes. If I see any difference or I'll email everybody.
Okay. So why don't we, if someone would be willing to make a resolution. To approve purchase of a salt shed using the bids from bonded concrete and Eagle with a nod to exceed of $7,000.
I'll offer it.
Rob?
I'll second it.
Ricky, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I have one question, Rob. That include the blacktop?
Um.
Has to be put down?
Yeah. Well, you know what? It's a good question. Um, I don't, Wayne never got back, or I'm sorry, Anthony never got back to me on the cost of. It's a foreign space, right? You were putting down?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to need a price on that. On the blacktop.
Okay. I think we should still have adequate, we will have adequate funds in there to do the blacktop.
I would say, yeah.
I can just take that out.
Gail, I'm sorry, I moved out without opening it. Uh. But if you're okay with moving forward on the purchase of the, um, the shed and the block?
Yes.
Any other discussion on that before we vote? Okay. So Rob made the motion, Ricky seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carries?
Uh, that's it for me.
All right. The diesel tank cover, Rob. We got a quote for 2,865. I think that was also Eagle, right?
Yes.
Is that an all in quote? That's all we need? And then we're done with the diesel tank cover?
That's it. Yeah. As far as I know, that's all we need. Yeah.
Is that installed or is, uh, the DPW installing it?
Uh, that's installed.
Installed. Okay. That's probably a pretty good deal then.
All right. Uh, so I'm going to go over the financials here in just a second. We've got to do it very quickly. We've got a total spend right now. With all contract adds of $1,050,502. So we're still well within our bond. Uh, plus we have the bond plus the 280, 240 we started with, uh, in reserve. Uh, so we're, we're. We've used very little of, of the cushion we expected to need. So I'm comfortable with a $3,000 expenditure for diesel tank cover. Any additional questions or concerns over that?
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a diesel tank cover or was it Eagle? Is that right, Rob? Using Eagle's bid?
Eagle, yes.
For $2,865.
I'll offer it.
Rob?
I'll second it.
I think Amy was, uh, first. Amy second. Any other dialogue or discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Anything else?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Sorry, I'm just, uh. Looking through, I saw some chats came in. I want to make sure I'm keeping up with the chats.
I was just going to tell you to keep up with the chat.
Yep. So, uh. Yeah, the 2%, I, I agree. It's inflationary. So the, the, um, the note is that 2% uh, per year is, is fairly standard. Uh, and it's a cost of living or inflationary adjustment, which I agree. And, and taxes generally go up 2% a year, uh, without having to, 2% a year on taxes is not considered raising taxes. So it's, it's inflationary cost of living. So I agree. Uh, we still have to get down and negotiate with them though, Anna. Okay, uh, Amy?
Um. I just had one thing I wanted to put out there. We don't have to, we can discuss it at a later date, but, um. I was wondering how everybody felt about getting some signs for the riverfront park that sort of delineate some of the rules of the park, like. Authorized vehicles only, pick up after your dog. We just have one little pick up after your dog sign, you know, a leash. You know, just some of the rules. We have a lot of new, uh, new people in the village, which is great, but there's, I, I'm down there every day and I, every day somebody's doing something that I'm just kind of like, you can't drive your car in here. But you're not going to leash. This, that and the other thing. Don't drink alcohol unless it's music in the park night. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there and maybe I would go and just do a little research as to, um, you know, the cost of that. And we can talk about what rules we would want to put on it at the entrances. And another thing that I, I had a thought about was. Um, and I don't know how people feel about this, but, um. You know, I know that the one break in the, in the shrubbery is where, uh, the DPW has to drive in to, to get the trash and, and do all that. But maybe we could chain it off on, and that middle entrance and the side entrance by the gazebo so that people just don't think that they're supposed to drive in there. Um, we did have that complaint where somebody just drove right up to the boardwalk and started fishing. And I was in there the other day and some guy had parked next to the, the band shell and was just like hanging out there. And just, you know, like there was tons of parking on the street. I don't know why anyone would think you could park there, but that's just something I've been thinking about and I wanted to. Just see how people felt about moving forward and doing some research on that. Just.
So my thoughts personally, I, I guess I'm okay. I'd be okay with a, with kind of nice signs at either end of the park that list some of the rules of the park. I don't necessarily want. A whole bunch of little signs all over the park that start to make it, you know, start to detract from.
Well, no, you know, I would keep it tasteful, but I just think, you know, where you, the, the main entrances, like where the boardwalk is and maybe by the gazebo in that middle part, just like. Some of the main things that we want people to know about the park and using the, you know, use the trash receptacles. If they're full, take it with you. Or whatever, like I'll come up with something and we can all discuss it, but.
I think that'd be good.
I think it would be good too.
I don't know that I like the chain.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't know. It's a little cheesy, but it's just, maybe if the signs are there that say authorized vehicles only, people will not.
That, that would be a place. I think we could put a sign like that. I don't think that would detract from the park at all.
Okay.
Put it there.
So I'll do a little research on signage and pricing and, and verbiage and all that.
Okay, thank you.
We'll come back around with that. Um, the other thing is, I know we discussed it, but I just wanted to let everyone know that. I'm going to post for Halloween about, um. The governor sent some guidelines, uh, about how to celebrate Halloween safely. So I'm going to post them onto the blog. And with just a little message that says, you know. Stay safe and respect your neighbors who are opting out of Halloween this year. Not everybody's all that into the trick or treating. So if nobody, if people's lights aren't on. Um, but I'll put that out tomorrow or Friday, just so that we have that message out there, just reminding people to.
For, for those who haven't seen it, what the guidance states is predominantly you shouldn't do it. Uh, but if you do choose to participate, uh, and you're going to have candy for people, uh, it should be individually packaged. So not just a big bowl that everybody's reaching into individually packaged bags, uh, and set, you know, six feet apart. Uh, or six feet from the front door essentially. Uh, trick or treaters have to wear masks, not just plastic Iron Man masks. Uh, but they have to have a, a dual layer cloth mask under their plastic Iron Man mask because apparently. Plastic Iron Man masks don't stop COVID. So, uh, they gotta, you gotta have a regular mask. Uh, you know, we talked about gloves. It's actually not, which kind of surprised me. Gloves are not in, uh, the governor's notice. But the segregated bags are.
Yeah.
Sorry, MJ, did you say something?
Oh, I was just saying, he had some kind of cute things in there of like other ideas of how to celebrate too. So I just thought it would be. Something good to put out there. Um, a lot of people probably already received it, but just a little note from us that says. Enjoy, but also be aware that this is still an issue. And if you're, you know. Some people are going to not want to participate. So just respect that, you know?
Yep. We will have carved pumpkins and decorations in the park, correct MJ?
Yes. Uh huh.
Who's doing that? That's the pumpkin parade committee, right?
Yes. Uh huh.
But you didn't want me to.
Carved pumpkins and decorations in the park for folks as well.
Yeah. Did, but MJ, you didn't want me to real, really publicize that, right? That's sort of like a.
You know, I'm not sure yet. I'll, I'll, I'll think about it and I'll send you something.
Cool.
Uh, via email.
Yeah.
About what to put in there. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think we're going to overwhelm it. It's, it's a walking thing, right? So if people are socially distancing.
Yeah. It's just basically decoration. And if people want to bring down, we, we brought pumpkins to the school and delivered them to the kids this week. And, uh, we put a little note in there saying if they wanted to carve them at home or decorate them. And bring them down to the park later in the afternoon that we would light them and we're going to decorate and we'll just, you know, have a scene there and they can just enjoy it. Take some pictures or whatever on their own. So it's not really a big deal. Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm comfortable putting something on the community board about that, Amy. I think it's a, it's a, it's a moving thing where people are going to walk through and look at it. I don't think we'll have a.
Okay. I'll circle back to Mary Jo tomorrow, or we'll get, we'll get something, we'll get it figured out before Saturday.
Good.
Yeah. And it's weather related. It's weather related too. I don't think it's supposed to rain. We'd probably set up, you know, early in the morning. And then clean up the next day. And, um, you know, so we'll see what the weather is like too.
Yeah. That's what, I think that's supposed to be the nicest day of the week actually, but cold, chilly, but.
Okay.
Um, and then the only other thing I had was just, um. A resident, uh, brought up an idea to me and I thought it might dovetail with the, um, police reform. And I don't know what would go into this, but the idea was that maybe we could look into having some sort of big brother group. Um, big brother, big sister, where there's, um, you know, for young people that they have sort of a mentor. Relationship. Um, cause I know this woman has a son and she said, it's just very hard. She's a single mother and she said, it's very hard. He doesn't have a lot of good male. Influence. So it's just, um, I didn't know if you wanted to bring that, if that has anything.
I think it's a good, I, you know what? Hold on, let me add it. Um, I think it's a good idea, but I think it's probably a county level good idea.
Yeah.
Uh, for it to be successful. So let me, I've got a list of things to talk to, uh, Pete about. Let me see if he's aware of a county program about that.
Yeah, maybe that if there's a program already in place, there, somebody would be willing to start a local chapter or something like that.
Good.
That's it for me.
Uh, Tell?
I think we've covered everything. Nothing new for me.
MJ?
No, nothing.
Okay. I've got a couple of things. And then before we convene, I want to go into executive session, uh, briefly with one topic. Um, so we'll talk about that and how that works in a second. Um, so first DPW garage, I alluded to this already. Um, we had an original bid amount of 1,040,431. Uh, following awards and contracts. Uh, so we, we actually took a few options off of that. I don't recall what they were, to be honest. Um, it was a, I think one of them was an automatic generator that we removed.
Yes.
In the contract bid for, for, and we went with a, uh, manual generator. I don't remember what the second was on, that was the 17 for the electric. I don't remember what the other was. Um, that got us down to following those deductions, just over a million. Uh, then we added on this 5,000 for electrical, just redoing some outlets, et cetera. Uh, we, um. Ran all of the piping, uh, for the radiant, uh, flooring. Um, so our total, uh, contract value today is 1,050. Uh, the reason I bring this up, so we had a, uh. We're still well within, like I mentioned, well within where we were from a standpoint of total bond as well as the 240,000 we started with, uh, in reserve. Um, the reason I bring this up is we need to make a decision on whether we want to hook up those. Um, radiant floor heating. We put them in because that's a, you either do it or you don't ever get it. Um, but I wanted to hold off, uh, actually purchasing the boiler and everything needed to run that radiant heat. It does have heat. Right? Uh, so the radiant heat is not entirely necessary. It is a heated building, but the radiant heat would be more efficient. Uh, as, as well as, uh, more comfortable, uh, for the vehicles. The cost. Of the boiler controls, antifreeze and accessories would be 22,655, bringing the total project costs up to 1,073,000. Discussion?
I, I think now's the time if we're going to do it, do it now. Uh, cause you know, as we know, costs are going to keep going up. Um, radiant heat is, is a very efficient heat and. Um. You know, we, uh, we took, we took, got rid of the stand, what was it? The standby generator? What was that? 17,000?
That was 17.
17,000. I mean, we originally anticipated on buying that. I would say, you know, there's only a $5,000. Difference there between, uh. You know, going with radiant heat versus the standby generator and. And radiant heat, um, it is, you will save money in the long run, um, by utilizing it. Um, and I think if we wait to, you know, keep putting it off, um. You know, once again, you know, we made it this far. Let's, let's just get it done, you know? That's just my thoughts.
I agree.
I agree.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the expenditure of 20,000, 22,655 dollars? To add the boiler controls, antifreeze and accessories for radiant heat in the DPW building?
I'll offer it.
Rob?
I'll second.
Second.
Gail? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So carries? Rob, you can let, uh, Jason know that, please.
Okay. All right. Yep. Thank you.
All right. Um, that's that. I told, I said I'd talk about the solar projects a little bit. Um, again, our only. Dog in the fight, so to speak, on the two solar projects. The two solar projects are the Flint Mine that runs along 9W. Uh, in the town of Athens and the town of Kuxaki. And the Hecate, uh, which runs kind of in the valley, uh, between 385 and 9W. And the Hecate, uh, which runs kind of in the valley, uh, between 385 and nine W behind the prison down there. And that's quite a large one. My concern started with engineering studies that were commissioned by Sleepy Hollow Lake that stated that each project individually would cause increased earthen erosion, erosion on Sleepy Hollow Lake. The dam is an earthen dam. So that's why we, you know, threw our hat in with the interveater funds as an interested party. Uh, there was another study that came out that said basically the same thing. The quote was something to the effect of, if not constructed carefully, uh, this project could increase erosion. But it was for each individual project. Uh, so my assertion all along has been, there needs to be a study that accounts for the combined effects of both projects, right? If one project in and of itself has to be constructed carefully, so as not to call, cause adverse impact to the dam. Then what's the impact of both, uh, both projects, even if they are constructed carefully? So that's what we've asked for. Uh, that went out in that letter that was due by the end of this week. Their attorney called me today, tried to talk me out of it. But we're, we're moving forward with that. That's really our only concern. Obviously, uh, Kuxaki has a lot more concerns. These two projects constitute 9% of the total, uh, available space in Kuxaki. I mean, it's a tremendous impact in Kuxaki. Um, and they had other concerns about, uh, there's an owl and, and, uh, some other concerns out there as well, um, around farm space. But again, our only dog in that fight is relative to the, the safety and longevity of the Sleepy Hollow Dam and the impacts it could have if that were to fail. Uh, we took care of the salt shed. Uh, MJ, anything further on the street lamp? On Washington?
Yes. Yes, it should be there in two weeks, a week or two.
And then looking to get the street lamp down behind the new DPW building. So we can, uh, go with the directional lighting plan back there. And I think, uh, Jason sent you an email on that yesterday.
Yeah.
That was all I had. So I'd like to go into executive. What I think that means is Tal and MJ, you can stay on. Uh, everyone else, I'm gonna need you to drop off. Uh, I give you my word, we will not conduct any further business after we come out of executive. However, you are welcome, once you drop off, to click back on if you'd like. And once we're done with executive, uh, you'll be in the waiting room and we can let you in once we're done with executive. We will come out of executive and adjourn. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Thanks, everyone. That means I have to turn the recording off.
Yes.